On the August 20th meeting of the Bupshir Township Planning Commission meeting to order, if you're all willing and able, please stand and present their recital pledge. My pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common. I want you all to know that I'm with the American planning out of the behind the stage. Yeah, it moves around, doesn't it? All right, so? In front of you, we have an agenda for tonight. Sri has made it here on time, so I do not have a request to move her in the agenda. Is there anything else on the agenda that anybody wants to add, delete, or change?
Oh, correction, sixteen a day. I think that's supposed to be sections nine, ten, not nine, twelve.
Oh, it is nine, ten, yeah. Why you have no?
How do we keep doing that?
And Paul keeps touching it.
No, no, I agree. Right now, I was speaking, though, this is not very clear. Thank you, Paul. Anything else? Seeing as may I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Okay, move, move, approve as amended.
Second. Gee whiz. Truly, truly instantaneous. Okay, thank you very much. All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Thank you, commissioners. We also have in our packet the minutes from the July meeting. Anybody have any comments or questions on that? I have one just to clarify my own brain. Under number four. Apparently, I made a comment about the nuisance ordinance. I don't remember making a comment.
I do. Because I made a line about, so in Sri's table on her report, where she lists all the ordinances and permits, which is useful because it's not just ours, it's also the board's.
Right.
But we requested two changes to that. To change, because there's three different categories. So maybe when we get to hers, or if you want to look at it. It's, it's still the same way. It has not been changed. It's on page eight of twenty-nine. There's different categories. Ongoing ordinances at the planning commission, amendments.
Yeah, I saw that too. I have a question about that also.
And that's when you said the nuisance ordinance is to be on the planning commission list.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate the update on my brain. Does anybody have anything else? Questions, comments? We have a motion to approve the minutes from July sixteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Move that clarified.
Second. Oh, kind of earlier than that. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Thank you. Appreciate the update on the minutes in my brain. This time, we have not a training for public comment. If anybody had written for public comment, should apply for the planning.
Hello, Peter Stevenson. I have a question. Um, I don't know if it's just an oversight this month, but there doesn't appear to be an online agenda posted for the planning commission. I'd love to follow along tonight, but it's not on the website. Nor is there a printed copy for the public. I hate to be a bearer of bad news, but not having posted public agenda, or at least a literary agenda for a public meeting, does violate the Michigan Open Meetings Act. So you may want to get that posted before you do that again next time. Thank you.
Just noticed the same.
Can you turn on whatever is?
I can't do that. Darren was not in the office, but the online one, we remember posting it.
She has a mic.
No, I mean, the online one, we remember posting it. Thank you for bringing introduction, but this one, I don't know. I can go print that and then post the agenda online so that you can access.
Thank you. I'll have a small recess. To quote Mike Myers, "Hot dogs, yourselves."
Me, the fellow writers, what's that?
We don't get off by any hurry. We're going to hear.
Okay, gentlemen.
Well, that's, that's possible.
Rest in contention. Thank you.
I think we did create the packet, just probably forgot to put one on together. I was driving the office. We posted the agenda outside on the notice board. Website, I will name.
Okay. That'll get after it.
I will send a transcript for that.
All right, is your voice good enough to give a report?
Yeah.
Moving on, our township manager and zoning administrator has to report for us.
Um, I think the rate of public applications has happened quite a few this month. And this month also has been a very meeting-heavy month. We had a special meeting for the board regarding the private roads. And then we had a ZBA meeting where we talked about non-compliant expansion and a couple other applications. I think Brick Lane's been on that a little bit after. And then we had a Parks and Rec master plan meeting, committee meeting, where we discussed the survey results and survey was out there. As I noted earlier, we only got about thirty-three responses, but we got some good content out of it. We discussed draft goals and objectives with Parks Committee. They are all in agreement with those. We have, we're going to have an open house on August twenty-eighth, six p.m. to eight p.m. We'll have some votes out there, and we're hoping to get a better response rate than the survey. So please do spread the word.
I have a question. Go ahead.
My first question is about what you just said. Will there be some sort of invitation that we can forward?
Yes.
And soon, so?
Yes.
Because it seems like things get posted on the website and maybe the Facebook, but there's no email blast on it. No email blast or anything, so?
So the email blast, I think there was a technical issue. Since Mike started, we've been trying, I think, I know that Mike and Bill have been trying to work with our email blast people, trying to get a new format everyone, because the older one was pretty bland. And I think that we've just been getting pickups, or, okay, sorry. Uh, they've just been getting some roadblocks. But it is, it will be posted online on Facebook outside. We're just working on the data together.
I'm just thinking about it, because you said you only got thirty-three responses to the survey. So it seems like in August, which is summertime, to really try to get people there. We need to step up the communication thing.
Right. And what I realized is we posted on our website, Facebook, not, not very popular. We posted it outside, and then we also put some flyers out. And I think when St. Joe's flea market happened, I sent some flyers and a poster with Paul to make it available there. I had a poster out at Historic Society, because they have men's coffee hour every Monday. And I also had one with Dexter Historical Society as well. So, and then there was, I didn't reach out to them, but there was a sometimes article as well that indicated, that was published, indicated there's a survey out there for people, so. So that's why I'm relying on word of mouth now, because, I mean, those are all the avenues one can reach out to people. There might also be, you know, a thing where people might be going, oh, I just completed one coming months ago, why isn't anyone coming up? Because we did one for the park in the back. So this time, I'm trying to rely on your word of mouth. So if you, I will, I'm, I am hoping that I just got a little break, being sick. But I'm going to share, put it on the website, share it to you guys so that you can post it on your social media and stuff.
It does sound like you've done a bunch of different avenues.
I, I literally, like, every time somebody came in to apply for a permit, I gave them a QR code to take it home with them.
So I have one other question. And this is clarifying the table on page eight. So, as I said, I think this is really useful, because it shows all the ordinances, not just the ones we're working on. But at the last meeting, we, we made two requests for changes. So, for example, in the second category, amendments in the pipeline for the PC. Number two, we, I requested that we, so in February, the planning commission chose sixteen fifteen as our second priority for the environmental rights. And in the P, in the annual report, we said we do, choose them and do them. So if we could make that more specific, because we did choose. So. So you see number two under amendments in the pipeline for PC. On page eight of twenty-nine.
In the chart.
Yes.
So if we could make that specifically, you know, article sixteen point one five, selected as a priority. We haven't started it yet, but we did select it.
Okay.
Now leave Tom.
You got one on the front. I think we're having a Star Trek episode. Because in your number seven G, you said July's been a busy week. Unless there's time compression. It might have been a month, could have been a week, but you never know.
I'm sorry.
Look at that, July is a busy week.
It's just very, the days flew by. The whole month felt like a week, and August is here.
So I had a question about the chart also, just in terms of where some things stand with the board, because I look back on our notice, and we had accessory structures in March, it's now September. It's not on the boards list at all. The nuisance ordinance is now behind that, because that's sitting there for us to look at. It's not on March per se, but on the updates for us, is there any movement, or should it be included in the chart? On the expectation of the, from the Historical Society? I noticed it wasn't there, but they have been here multiple times. So should we include that in our chart for us to expect things?
Um, the chart's more of a text amendment.
Okay.
This is only ordinances, text amendments.
Right. And then?
But in the report, it does uncover other things that are in, that are in her basket that affect our work.
Right. Uh, I mean, it didn't come into my basket yet. I mean, it came and then it's on hold again, so I'm waiting for it. I don't know why I'm going along with that. But that's why it's not there. I still, I think, feel as if waiting to hear back from me on a couple of things, and then I checked the rate, and this doesn't seem to be a time crunch from the Historical Society. Correct me if I'm wrong, Rick. But yes, so if you make some forms a bit of again, I'll put it back in the list and then update you guys. When it comes to accessory structures, yes, that's been on hold, because since the board had a moratorium and then tried to get their focus more on private roads. Or there's, the accessory structure is in Matt's task list, but he's helping us now with the private roads. But board did make progress on a couple other amendments, quicker ones which were adopted and are effective. And it's on my list of things to update the zoning ordinance books and then give you the inserts. So that's on my list. But that was, that was good progress, and that's why the amendment chart is falling, because they're effective now, so I took them off the list. And board just adopted another one last night, so.
Pieces of it, yeah.
Right.
Two out of three, two out of three, yeah, that's, that's.
I guess it's two out of two our planning commission recommended. Three was just my turn to try to get it, you know, I had, you know.
Well, on that, is that coming back to us to look at? Or, or is three moved?
No, it's coming back to you.
Okay. That's what I thought happened last night.
It's got to come back.
Yeah, okay.
Get the sample approval, come back for it.
Right. Yes.
So maybe then the other one in the chart is what you asked for last time, which was under the recommended amendments for the board. The first one is nuisance keeping of animals.
Right.
But they actually gave it to us, so it should come up to our list.
Right.
Right?
That's where I was.
That's where he was.
Another thing on my list, that's what, I mean, that's why I was saying nuisance.
Um, when it comes to nuisance ordinance, I think, Tom, you and I spoke a little bit, George and I had a conversation, and then I, you know, just, there's a lot. I think I see enough channel maybe mid-September. But you made a good suggestion that maybe if Paul and George would like to get together without me, and then just get some baseline set up, and then I can join.
Yeah, no, I, I just, for case, that's what, that's why I'm coming on the newsroom, because I think it's our list.
It is, yeah. I, I will look at the list, because we are not there, I probably just.
Right, and not for the board to consider.
Yes.
That's it. Something. Okay. Now, lastly, and this is just, I, I don't know about the rest of you, and this is no complaint, but the list of things you've done is like, really long.
Wow.
And that's a good thing. On the other hand, do we need all of that history going back a full year? Or is it just part of your report, and there's no difficulty?
Um, no, I think I can cut it up. I just need to figure out how to modify the report. I, I think to set a timeline period for it, so I can do that.
It looks like it's a year, like you go back a year.
It's stuck, yeah. The way the default report was set in BSNA is to the beginning of the year, but I, I was thinking about that, but I printed it, it was like, do you, they really mean what I've been doing all year? Or since BSNA started? So I can, I can set the parallelize in the report to say past two months or one month. What would you like to say?
I think, I would like to see what's just active. You talk about permanent, yeah.
Just active, or do you want to see how many came in for last, like, what happened in the last one month, or just active?
I, I, my personal preference is active.
Okay.
Active and what closed in the past month?
Yeah, yeah, that's.
That'd be good.
That's what I was thinking. That way we know how many permits were issued in the last month.
Right.
Okay. I can modify the report.
I have a couple of questions within the report. So I'm, I'm, sorry. No, it's, I attend the board meetings, so I have questions. So the private roads thing is, is a big thing. And yet, at least once, there was a private road that was issued. Does that get in the way of the, what came up last night on, in terms of grandfathered roads? Or, no?
Last night?
At the board meeting, there, well, it's part of the private roads, and the discussion is.
Velvet Ridge?
Yeah.
Oh, that's in New York.
Okay, well, there was one in North Territorial in September of twenty-four.
Thirty-six, seventy-six.
Yeah. I, I just wondered if it's, because the discussion of last night's board meeting was, and it's, is, how do you do grandfathered? But now these are private roads that have been issued. And if they, I, I don't know, I'm just asking.
No, I'm trying to follow the question. So the Velvet Ridge, Velvet Ridge, that is a new construction, new road through La Viga. So it's a new private road permit. The one, three, six, seventy-six, is that Gary France one?
I think that's Gary France. Yes, that was a.
That was an existing non-compliant road, so they.
Oh, in for a variance, okay, okay.
They came in for a variance, so he had to, he constructed a hammerhead and then widened the road to be able to, yeah, that was a non-compliant.
Just a private road issue, and I was like, ooh. And actually, church was the one that they built that one.
Yes, that was a new shared driveway. Mike, yeah, it was just three houses. Speaking of that, so the next special board meeting is scheduled for September tenth. They're gonna, wait, is the board report happening?
Hmm?
Did the board?
No, go ahead.
I won't steal your.
No, 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 steal, no way.
September tenth is the next special board meeting. I think they're going to start off with some priorities, because they need to pass the resolution for the budget, and then talk about private roads, picking up where we left off. It's just more detail. The packet's posted online. No, it's on the.
Thank you. Anything else for Sri? I'm sorry for taking so much time there. I have to bring it to work. Thank you very much. Is there anything we report on zoning enforcement?
I think I did send out an email to planning commission members after last month's meeting, because there was some confusion I created with comments I made with regards to the information that's part of the zoning enforcement report, because I wasn't quite sure. But I went back and I spoke to Matt, spoke to Mike, and then I sent a clarification note to all planning commission members. And it was decided, because enforcement is not part of my duties, I only respond to, you know, collaborate with Chuck if he has any, requires any clarification with regards to zoning ordinance requirements or anything. So he's just going to be including the report in the PC. But if, is there any specific questions? The best way to get more details would be to reach out to Mike or Chuck regarding enforcement. However, if I come across any language issues or anything that I need to bring back to your notice, because if we're wanting a next amendment or a discussion, I will do that.
I, I, I engage Mike after that. And my only concern about only coming up with numbers like in the paper is exactly your point. If there's something that we have signed off on, like La Fontaine.
That'll read the, that'll.
And then I think it's incumbent on us to know that, because our decision is involved in whatever that action is.
That, that I will, I will report you, which I was gonna, that's online. I was gonna talk about it. But also, with regards to just numbers and all, I believe George can speak for it, but George spoke with, George met with Chuck. They're going, they've agreed on a different format for reports, so that it's not going to be just numbers.
And what is that?
So I'll speak on that. So Chuck is going to have his report. It's going to be a very similar report that he submits to Mike, but it's going to be similar to what we get from the sheriff and how the sheriff report when it's listed in the paper. Okay, so in other words, we don't have the addresses. We, we won't have them in our report, we won't have the addresses. But all we need to know is, let's just hypothetically say there's, there's six violations that month that you received a complaint on, and six of them are for chicks and chickens, and three are for home-based business, and three are for broken down cars. I'm just throwing an example. We will have that information, so that when we're sitting here wondering, oh, hey, we've had six months in a row that there's a chicken complaint, is there something that we need to do from the ordinance? Is there something that's not clear? It's kind of a, I, I broached a topic as the same communication we have with ZBA, and how we're supposed to go back and forth with ZBA to determine if something needs to be changed in the ordinance, if there's, if clarity needs to be made. So he'll, he'll provide that on a month-to-month basis. The only thing that would not show on that report is if he had a complaint come in, he investigated it, it was unfounded, so it was opened at the first of the month, and closed on the seventh of the month. It will not show on the report. And we agreed that's okay, because it's very similar to the sheriff. If you have a sheriff call for service, and the sheriff didn't need to come, they put it down in the report that's basically a one-page click. We didn't have to show up, so it doesn't even go down as a sheriff one. And I said that was fine. As far as to clarify, to clarify what Sri said, we can get this information if you want to have specific further clarification on anything. Just Mike can provide that, and Mike is okay with providing that.
Collected between individually?
Either way. Yes, if, if, I mean, he was specifically talking individually, but having the addresses redacted, the names redacted, not that they were there, but, but we don't care about that information right now for the purpose that the PC needs that information. It's simply to see if there's any clarity that we need to make within our ordinance.
So, George, I wonder if, if we should just look at it. I mean, getting a report is fine, but should we look at it like the ZBA one and maybe ask for a compiled report at the end of the year?
Well, I think that will make sense, yes.
That's, that's what I, I would recommend to give you a.
Good, good idea.
Which is essentially what I summarized in my mail. Uh, you got your La Fontaine. I, I heard they cleaned up. Chuck, I, I guess from Chuck's perspective, he said it is cleaned up. I did look at some pictures, I think they cut the grass and shrubs. Would you?
I'll tell you that at least two of us on this board have driven by their, they have not. There was, there's a rumor.
They really did, okay. That's what I kind of told Chuck, too, of like, it's different than before. I don't know if that's the one it should be. Okay, I'll get back with Chuck.
Yes, just, if somebody does have all what they're supposed to do with three quarters on that agreement, or says, says they're supposed to be more, or complete job, then, then, you have a job to fish.
So what, the, the way Chuck left it off with La Fontaine is that they did, they did make some progress, but he didn't close it completely. He said he's going to keep it, keep the complaint open for two years, so that they know that they're being, you know, monitored.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else for Sri? Mr. Moore, representative. How are you this evening? Fine, all good, thank you.
So we had the meeting last night, as some of you know, because you were here. Let's see, highlight stuff. We ended up, just for knowledge sake, we released a performance bond for the building expansion on St. Joe's. We voted to release that. There was a PDR appraisal approval that passed. What else is really relevant? The, the bar standards, as some of you know, there were three sections in that. Two of them got approved, well, there was actually more than that, three sections, four sections. Nine point one five D is getting sent back to us. And that's because there were some last-minute changes that were ahead of the group. We had a Parks Committee update, as Sri was just talking about, the open house coming up. Velvet Ridge, which is, that was before us again. There were some questions with regards to, I personally had some questions with regards to their infiltration basin. They have an infiltration basin on the site, and I wanted to see something in the maintenance agreement that verified that that was part of the maintenance agreement and needed to be checked out regularly, because they fail it over a while. You know, people. What else do we have? There was discussion over the next Friday, or special meeting. It's really, we have a discussion of township funding priorities. I don't know how much of the draft private roads is going to be on that next one. And yes, it's been a hot topic, as, as people know, we have a meeting on that. Um, and we started going over that. We got through the first three sections of it. Um, the last two sections, which are gonna be the contentious ones, uh, those, we didn't go over yet. So the first three pretty much were fine. And a lot of that, a- as we spoke about before, a lot of that's for creating new private roads. So that, that stuff's not really a question. The big, the big question and the big contention is really what's going on with the existing, how they're gonna be handled, that kind of stuff. And the, and the, and really what, what brought all that to the board to begin with was all these ones that kept coming to us for variances because they were on non-accepted private roads or, or ones that were prior to. Um, so that's set up, and I'm not sure how much of the road discussion's gonna be there. Uh, there may be another one with regards to that, the board has to set it. Um, there were questions about the website consideration. Uh, I, I know that it's been brought up before that there's an opportunity for the, for changes on the website coming up, so if you have any suggestions. Um, one of the ones that we had thought about last night was the roads committee talking about putting up a map on the website of where they're gonna be working and where. So those kind of things, where it's proposed, especially for the year that it's, it's approved, it would be nice for people to see where it is.
Yeah, Washington County does that, Road Commission.
Yeah.
So when they put out their update, you can see the map of what's going on.
We, we had talked about putting a big one up on a board here, which we still may do, but it, it would be nice so people don't have to come in if they just got on the website.
Yeah.
But if you have any, uh, suggestions or anything that you wanna see, especially from planning commission being posted there, um, and you want a different way of it happening, by all means, bring it up.
Um, just a biggie back from down, um, Bill and I are working together on some questions so that, you know, we can, because there are some parameters, like there are some limitations to how much we can change based on our contract with the revised. So we were gonna frame some questions so that you understand, uh, you know, then you can give your input accordingly.
Uh, there was, uh, the RFP for the renovation of the building has gone out, so, uh, we're waiting for that to come in. Uh, deadlines, uh, September fourth. Um, site visit deadline's the twenty eighth.
Did any discussion come up on more remediation along with that or adding to that RFP?
Uh, not adding to that specific RFP, there was discussion about it. Um, there has, there is, contractors are coming in to take a look at that. There's two different ones. There's gonna be, um, the contractors that looked at the mold originally came in and they're gonna be testing it with specific mold pipes. Um, they're also gonna be checking, we have a feeling that it's seal, the sealant around the, uh, windows, the trim work, that's really the problem. Um, and probably underneath a lot of the windows, there's been infiltration of water. Um, and that, part of that could have been, it was caulked before, but we have, a window specialist is gonna be coming in and looking at that too. So there's two different types of specialists that are gonna be looking. One is the window specialist to see if the trim works right, you know, if it's been caulked appropriately, all that other stuff. And then the second one is the people for the mold and moisture. They have a thing.
That's, that's not a part of the renovation.
It is not.
Okay.
No, we're not waiting for that. We need to, we need to figure out how safe that stuff is and, and, uh, sooner we can get it remedied, the better. So we're looking at, some of it, if we find out that there's some of it in the areas that we're gonna be renovating, so some of the offices, if they get renovated, we may have to wait on those or we may not. I mean, it doesn't make sense if you're gonna get a window contractor to come in and do these to not do them all. So, but I have a feeling that it's prob, we're probably gonna find it around the, all of the windows.
So it's everywhere?
We, we, it's underneath those, so in between the trusses. And then, um.
Also told the guy with the durometer, about one on that side of the building, wet windows.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And Rick, you can, like, you may have more, is, does that pretty much sum it up? I mean, some of that investigation's gonna be having on Friday.
Well, we did have, uh, a company come in and test the air to make sure that, uh, that it's safe.
Yeah.
In here, I mean, there's no mold or flying around or whatever, so as per the air, has been tested.
Good, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, we, we did that before there were any other meetings in here.
Thank you.
So, thank you. And then the last thing is, uh, there's gonna be one thing, there's an election in November, there's gonna be one thing on the ballot, and it's WISD is asking for one more mill. That's an additional, that's not, uh, redo or anything like that. It's, it's an extra one mill.
This wasn't on the agenda last night, but it's been in the papers that our friendly fire, well, two meetings ago, our fire board representatives have brought up that there were ongoing meetings and discussions, and it came up last night that our brand-new fire department over here needs a new parking lot. And in the paper, it says that the Dexter Fire Area Board, which we are a member of, wants to renegotiate the contract for services because they're in the hole a couple million dollars. Is that coinciding?
You want some more there again?
Yes, I do.
So, so there, there are two different issues. So one of the things is the design over there had some of the, um, the downspouts and stuff coming out before the parking lot. They didn't carry them underneath the parking lot. Um, and so what it ended up doing was where it was discharging, it was saturating the soils underneath the sidewalks and its lifting. So what they really need, they're gonna have to cut the parking lot and run, uh, drain tiles out. So it was, it's an oversight design. Um, one of those things, you figure out after you build, right?
That we, that the township gets to pay for?
Uh, yeah.
Oh.
Yeah, we're, a- as far as I know, that's something that we're gonna have to look and pay for. Um, the second thing is, it's the city of Dexter has decided that they want to discuss how the, um, how the fire department is compensated.
Yeah, okay.
And, uh, they're.
More money.
Basically, their stance is that, yeah, they, they don't think that the vision and how it's being paid for is fair. Um, and right now, it's really, uh, a- as far as I know, it's being paid for by the runs. I mean, if you have X amount of runs in your township, that's what you pay for. So.
You're right.
Yeah.
So basically, it, with the fire department is, and they were okay with the idea when Webster had the most, uh, percentage of runs in the, in the, in our local agreement. Now that most, most of the runs are in the city of Dexter, they feel that they're paying more than their share. But if you look over the last ten years, it's pretty well even.
Yeah. And, and.
But they want, they wanna change the, the structure of the interlocal agreement so that, uh, they don't have to pay, to pay their share anymore. And, and it was always based on runs and, and, and they got the most runs. It was fine when we had the most runs.
And the costs have gone up because for the longest time, the other stations had two firefighters stationed at them, we had one. We finally got two and now they wanna change it.
So we have the cost cut down for everybody then, not just them?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. And don't we split the fire trucks, the three ways somehow?
I, I can't tell you how the division totally is.
Brand-new million-dollar fire truck.
But, yeah.
Okay, thank you. I don't mean to be contentious, I promise. It's been, there was a little bit of discussion on that, basically.
Yeah. I have two questions. Um, website, is there a general timeline for updating the website? I mean, like, we're talking about end of the year, are we talking twenty twenty-five?
Um, of the overall updates or gen?
Township website, yeah.
The one builds working on it?
The one builds, yeah.
Uh, I think end of this year or sometime.
Okay.
Um, our contract is coming to an end, so they gave us an option, or renew, I think they're up for renewal or something. So they gave us a option, okay, since you're gonna renew anyways, you have this option if you want to do some upgrades or something like that.
Thank you. My other question is also about the moratorium on private roads. So there's a moratorium, is it only on non-conforming ones?
Yes.
And are the criteria in the new ordinance for new private roads the same as now? Because if this, if Velvet Ridge gets approved based on the current ordinance, is it now gonna meet the future one too?
So, I think the, the terminology is, uh, that is a good question. The terminology is non-compliant versus non-conforming. Non-conforming is something that conformed with ordinance requirement at some point, so it's kind of, it's okay. Um, but non-compliant is it never complied with any ordinance requirements. But because it's a public, um, general law ordinance, the grandfathering doesn't automatically. So in your question, yes, while it, Velvet Ridge is eighteen feet wide right now, the ordinance is proposing twenty feet for new construction, so it would be a non-conforming road if the ordinance gets adopted, but there will be provisions in there to acknowledge the non-conforming roads.
Thank you. I heard Tom's question, I heard your answer, but I still didn't understand it, so thank you.
I didn't understand Tom's question, but there's non-compliant roads? Like, for example, um, Vespilar, it's non-compliant because it never applied for a road permit, so it never was, uh, you know, it never conformed with the ordinance requirement, so it's, it's a non-compliant road. Velvet Ridge would probably be a non-conforming road because it confirmed, it, it went through the proper procedure, it got the approvals, it's just that the ordinance changed that made it non-conforming. That's, but yes, the draft ordinance is gonna include provisions as how to deal with a non-compliant road and how to deal with a non-conforming road.
Thank you.
If I can, I do not have a ZB A report, but.
The general's over there?
Why, a township department and open space preservation board, but anyway, um, maybe we can get that in our box if there's a original at some point. Rick, do you have anything you'd like to offer from the ZB A line?
Well, last, last week, we had several variance requests, and the first one we did was, uh, eighty-four ninety-one Haverdive Drive, and that particular, um, variance was presented to us a month ago. And, and we, um, postponed it and basically and, and told them to, to look at other alternatives and they were able to, um, there's a house on that they wanna tear down and build a brand-new house, and it's, it's a non-conforming lot. And, and we felt that it could, and Haverdive guys, a primary road, so it's a hundred and ten foot setback, so it, it really creates a problem. But all the houses down in that lot and that, along that road are all lined up, they're all non-conforming, are most of them. So anyway, we, we looked at, or told them to look at alternatives and they were able to, um, move the house back so it's not as much of a variance as originally requested. So that was approved. The second one we dealt with was eighty-one twenty-five Chamberlain Room, and that's another non-conforming that, uh, the lot's only less than two acres, one point four four acres, I think. And, and the house is non-conforming because it sits too close to the property line. And, uh, but the ex, expansion, the extension that, um, they wanna build a sunroom and addition and a porch on it, and they're all conforming, they're not in the setback at all. So that one was also approved. The third one was, you know, we've been dealing with, that peninsula, basically, um, people wanna build a quite a large house on that small peninsula there. They ended up, I, I don't think, I'm not sure they actually bought the property, but they at, at least have a, um, um, option on buying a lot next door so they can move the house, but there's still three variances, I, I believe that they have to, uh, buy, buy, and, and I think basically they're waiting for the F A R.
Uh, the board said not now, send it back to planning commission.
Yeah, so that wasn't even discussed at, I mean, they came and presented their case and what they're doing now, but, um, we didn't, um, basically discuss that with the board, so that's still not known.
That was the nine, nine point one five.
Right. Um, the, like, like I said yesterday, that was the reason that prompted the part that how did we miss this when we all went to the AG? And, uh, I didn't look at number of lot that I'm talking about, they are less than thirty-five in our one district. So the revision those proposed would only apply to thirty-five lots if they would decide to add to it.
So the face lake one is where the ZB A said, you're just asking for too much. Um, we can entertain some variances, but not this much, right? Isn't that the one where you said, and they also ignored the zoning ordinance about surface water setbacks? Is that the one?
Right.
Yeah, okay. So they're still working on it?
They're still working.
That's correct. Does that have an egg?
Oh, no.
I don't know if that's on.
So they did apply for three variances, got denied, now they're starting over, they applied for three variances, and then, uh, we told them that you also need a fourth variance, so ZB A didn't make any decision that night, but they just wanted an opportunity to present their case. So the idea was that if the F A R is clarified, then they would revise the plan to meet the F A R requirement so that they don't have to ask for the fourth variance. But now I think they'll probably have to add the fourth variance and then, you know. But it is an R one, they don't, they didn't buy both properties, they have hold-on option.
So they haven't bought them yet.
No.
Thank you, Rick. Um, they have a written PDR report, can anybody tell me if I have a question that's who to ask, uh, what's the question?
That would be mine.
You could ask the chairman, or you could ask Barry Lannick, or you could ask trustee Sherry Versen.
Well, I would, Shelley.
Shelley.
I, I could ask Sherry, but she probably wouldn't answer.
Sorry.
That's our even stuffs.
Shelley Versen.
Well, there was a closed session.
Yes.
And I don't know how that happens in this case because it's use of public funds.
So I can tell you, because I have attended PDR meetings, that they have very politely told me to leave when they went into public session. So if they talk about an application and they're talking about the details of, of, that involves a lot of personal in, information about that application, they, they go into closed session. And then they just summarize when they come out without giving all those personal details. So that's what has happened to me when I've been there.
It says closed session, roll call, all eyes. It doesn't say that it was reopened, it says a motion was carried, and it's like, bizarre how it's written, I, I guess. Oh, okay.
Yeah, we don't even get the, we don't give the board on where those locations are. So.
This is none of my business. Well, since there's nothing reported here, natural features committee, K, which others have seen.
So I'd like to say a little bit more today, reminding you about our website framework and that we've been working on for like seven months now. Um, so you saw it last winter and, um, we've been working on populating it, so I'll remind you of the sections. The first section is land and waterways, features and protections. It starts out with links to maps and things from our master plan that has already been put on the website, but we've also linked to it here. We add some other things like pre-settlement vegetation, um, cool and important features in Webster Township, right? We go to the protections and we just have a brief explanation and we link to the ordinances and master plan. and we link to the ordinances and master plan. And then we have a section on land preservation. So we, the Natural Features Committee initially made a proposal just based on some ideas. And trustee Shelley Versen, who is the board member of the Natural Features Committee, is also the board member of the PDR committee. So she has spoken to them, and they have lots of ideas for what they would like to put on the website. And so they're working on that for the land preservation section. And when I talk about linking things, so some things may be linked in two different places on the website, right? They may be, they're there and they get linked. The next section of our, the biggest section of our website framework is backyard stewardship. So this is information based on our ideas and the feedback we got last year about what people wanna know to get started with things. So there's one section about native and non-native species. There's a section about tree care, pollinator habitat, reducing runoff, pollutants. And a lot of these are really how-to, where do I find how to do this? Or where do I get help? And then the, we're currently talking about an additional section. And this is, we wanna add a section that connects to small farmers. So we understand that professional farmers already know what resources they need. But given that now everybody in Webster Township can have chickens, and if you have a little bit of land, you can have small animals, we have found that there are a number of resources on the Washtenaw County Conservation District website that may be useful to new or smaller farmers. So the, the resources that we're thinking about are the Michigan Farm, which is bridging the gap between new and legacy farmers. It's the Michigan Farm Link. So Webster has been part of this for years. And it literally connects people who wanna buy farm land and start a farm with people who wanna sell it. And then the Washtenaw County Conservation District, they lend out, they get technical assistance, they lend tools. And then we had the Meep, Paul Buzzard here. I had several email exchanges with him. I asked a lot of questions to find out if they help anybody who's a farmer. And the answer is yes. So I could be, I have chickens and I sell them, and I want help with certain things, they would help me. So we're trying to figure out what to call this, so this section. So maybe, um, maybe small farmers or new farmers or something. Just have a few sources here in that section. So we're still talking about that. And when I get to the websites, I wanna show you this sheet. This is a vetting criteria sheet. For everything, we don't try to, we don't repeat everything. We have a brief introduction, and we link to websites that provide information. And we try not to have too many websites, and we vet every single one of those websites. And these are the criteria for the websites. So if you look at the bottom of the page, we're looking at relevance, purpose. We're looking for websites that inform, explain, or teach. We're looking for credible sources, you know, references, things like that. And we're, we're not, there's no entertainment, no media. So we're really looking for factual information. And we vet every single one of these websites. And our minutes are now posted online on the township website. And we, every time we vet one, we put this completed sheet in our minutes so that we have a record. So if people suggest websites later, we wanna also use these criteria. So our point person for working with Bill on the website update as well as, once we, we're getting close, probably by the end of the year, we'll have all this populated, ready, the content. And Shelley Versen is our contact with Bill to then add this to the township website. So she's providing him with our current framework and all that. So if you want more information, I can give you the current framework if you're interested, but I didn't wanna, like, give you tons of paper. So if you have any suggestions, some of those suggestions that they get might come to us because they might go in that section because we're working on all the content for that. Short thing, Shoreline Garden Tour. It was posted on the website, and we've asked now to put it on the Facebook page. The, um, the Lake Association has invited everybody, the public, to come to, to see their beautiful vegetative strip with natural, um, native plants in it on Base Lake. And it's tomorrow from two to six, and Friday from ten to three. The invitation's on the website. It's open. We're trying to spread excitement. There's three residents who are opening their homes for these tours. And finally, the Natural Features Committee is gonna participate in the Webster Township Fall Festival again. And our focus for kids is gonna be pollinators, maybe bees, orchidots. And for adults, it's gonna be native plants and invasive species.
Any questions?
Use the word novice.
Novice?
Instead of small farm or beginner, you say novice.
Novice?
Novice.
That's, that's not offensive anyway?
I don't think, outside your thinking, but I don't think it is.
Okay, thank you. We thought of some things that were clearly not, like backyard farmer?
No, I think, I think. I don't think that's insulting, and I think it can cover.
Novice, thank you. Novice farmers. Thank you.
Anybody else? Seems that will move on. We do not have a public hearing tonight. Therefore, move to old business, draft discussion article three, zoning compliance. I have a, I can't afford, and I'll, I'll ask you before we get into a very short one. We, no, typically, we have gone on, everybody's given it, but, but if we go through real quick and do edits, capitalization, periods collectively, and then give back, I think we can move through these quickly because I saw on page two and you saw on page three. It might be a way to streamline, like a period needs to go there, capitalization there. Does that make sense, or is it, do you think the way we've been moving is okay?
My thought would be the content is the most important thing. I'd rather do that first if we're gonna separate content from edits.
This is, this is the pyramid of how to get through stuff quickly, three pile method. If you learn this at management, you can make it through your day. You get the stuff in your inbox. What do you do? You look through it, and you go, throw that stuff away, it doesn't matter. The second group is, you send to people, you don't wanna have to deal with it. It's in their basket. And the third is stuff you gotta do. And this is sort of an attempt to do the three pile method to get the easy stuff out of the way, then get into it. That's okay.
If you're looking at the first bucket as, this is no good, I would base that on the content, not on the edits. So I would do that first.
You're a researcher, I'm not, I'm a visitor.
Oh, if I may suggest, would it be easier if, send me an email because?
No, we'll just leave the way it is.
Previous and stuff doesn't need to be discussed on a public forum. So you don't have to, like, get dirty. For already knows you can agree.
We'll just go through a light, yeah, would you please go to the background?
Um, I, I... It's pretty straightforward. They were, I think they revised draft, if we close all the discussions we had at the last meeting, cross-check with the minutes. I hope I got them on, but, um, no, we can go section by section as we usually do, and Doug, if there are any questions, I'm happy to ask.
Okay, I do have one comment again. Tom must have brain faded last week. On page one, under summary of draft, C clarification. I don't remember us removing foundation inspections. Does anybody else remember that discussion?
I'm sorry, where are you? Again?
In her summary, page twenty-one twenty-nine, summary of draft, number C. Notification inspections includes removal of foundation inspections.
That was never in the draft in the first place.
It wasn't in the draft, so we're not removing it?
It's in the current ordinance, we're removing it from the current ordinance, but it was not in the draft, so we haven't talked about it.
Okay, that's what I thought, but it says we're removing it. I thought we had. Okay. Well, then we'll just go in like we usually do. Any discussion on, I guess, starting on page twenty-three of twenty-nine, section three point oh?
Three point eight.
Or three point eight, excuse me. See?
You can bring in.
No, I have, I have my, I have all these inspections next to me.
I have one very specific thing on the very first sentence. It says, it shall be unlawful to change the type of use of land. We usually say land use.
Right.
So if we change it to land use, which we use generally, it'd be easier to search for that instead of type of use of land, type of land use.
Yeah, reverse it.
Yeah. So remove use of land and replace it with land use.
Anybody else have anything to add to the building? I have one, permit required. Subsection, first step should be capitalized. B, permit required, zoning compliance permit is required for pollutant unless it's a, or subsection three, sub should be capitalized. Can you talk to us a little bit about the addition of, I need to start erosion, Shree? That's new.
I think that was more of a clarification of how we want to make reference to the site erosion. The, uh, the last draft... Don't have the last version, but the last draft was referencing that our zoning compliance permit is required, and then the language was a little unclear. So the discussion was just to indicate that when a sound, county soil erosion permit is required, the zoning compliance permit will also be required. Just so it consisted with how we do a building permit.
Gotcha. And I also have a correction in the blue. Now, this may have changed into English, but in the English that I learned, there would not be a comma after alteration and before the word or.
I believe it's optional, and so therefore, the only requirement is be consistent.
Well, we don't include it anywhere else. I mean, everything else we have in order with this is done.
Then just be consistent.
Remove the comma phase.
Wait, I always put ours, I wonder if we have our comma there.
Two and three also there? Yeah.
Yeah, and there.
They're there, so... Then I'll have to screen, go through the whole draft and also the other drafts I've wrote down because I usually put it down.
Well, it comes up in a strange way, a little further down, but get it all together.
It could be the British English.
Well, that, that's true. Anything else in, in section B?
So are we removing it throughout our document, or?
If it requires too much work, we have it, but.
It's just not, I mean, it's, I know what you're saying. It comes in at C three, right?
Yes.
At C three, it's structure or use, it's not structure, comma, or use, right? So it's not consistent.
Then there's an or missing, bro.
I'd like to say it's just. Yeah. You just want it to be consistent one way or the other.
Of course, it's how to write this stuff, and it's like, so.
But the first one is like a list. When you have a list, before or or and, it's optional whether it's out there.
Not the way I heard it.
Oh, what, so, um, in the past decade?
Wow, that's my question. You know, now it's, now they kick your resume out if it has more than two spaces after the end of sentence in their screening thing. They know your whole, because we learned to do it with two spaces.
I did teach English at the U for ten years, and I did require, require, retired in two thousand twenty. But I have taught it in the past decade.
So it's optional?
It's optional, just be consistent.
And don't, don't change anything, like, get easy on yourself.
So are we?
Yes. Frank, whatever you just wrote down. But I ignore, ignore Tom. So anything else in D besides alterations? Thank you. Anything in C?
Um, three, uh, section should be capitalized. End of the first line and three.
Yeah. C three. At the end of the sentence, or first line.
Then ordinance decapitated.
Yes. Was that something K that you wrote? Nothing else in C? Or move on to D? And I, here's another English question. In number one, was such as when unlimited dwell septic soil erosion, should there be an or or and right of way?
Yes, and.
Oh, good, I got that one right.
You want to ask.
Hey. I made a note, this one.
And square.
So there's an or, right? Correct, or? Or right of way. Correct, yeah. Thank you.
To your adding or.
Remove, yes. And, and leaving the comma and because K said we should.
I said it's, I said, whatever you choose, just be consistent, it's a list.
We're leaving it. We're leaving it.
Thus, her answer remains the same, it's consistent. She wrote it the first time, she said it six times, just be consistent.
It's nice to go, I guess. Nothing else in D, provide any other questions?
Do we need inconsistency in?
Do we need periods?
Periods.
Two to one.
The format of my comment.
I'm gonna start with Jase, I thought I did such a good job.
Um, if I can, can I ask for a volunteer? Maybe next time I put the draft in the packet, if I can send this to somebody who can give it a second set of eyes, then maybe we can.
So I would do it except I'm gonna be gone through September tenth, and I think that will be too late then.
Right, for the next month's packet.
The next month's packet.
Otherwise, I would have to do it. Right, but just to, in response to your previous comment, if there's any way we can make it effective, I thought maybe if I can get a second set of eyes, we could probably.
So I can do it before August thirtieth or after September tenth, which I think is too late.
Okay. Maybe they're not doing it.
I'd be happy to do it. Well, Tom.
I mean, I might do it.
Okay.
For as long as it's consistent.
Yeah, I bet I could.
Well, I don't know, now I'm not gonna, you know, you ain't got an eye for a school teacher over here. I don't know, you got good eyeballs for this.
You should have seen that, right, she's, that's true. She's, she's getting really quiet.
She does, yeah.
Well, I can admit, I'm a woman.
Yeah, you gotta have some more than that sugar.
At least, at least, you got a free minute if you get it right.
You wanna share it with me, and I'm, I tried to make notes.
Number, number D, are we okay with, with the periods? End strike, you know, construction, correct?
Correct.
On to E, applicant responsibilities. They all have period, it's called.
Number four, section.
Yeah.
Set the line, catalog.
Yeah. We got it, number four, section, section, yes. On to page twenty-four, look chart, everybody okay with that? Go ahead.
Very bottom, the middle line certificate is well drawn.
Yeah. That's a great.
The other one's got corrected.
And speaking of consistency, I just wanna make sure we're consistent with the eighteen months unless an extension is provided because those extensions are referenced later on to board approvals. So we're good, so it really is eighteen months in the first turnaround?
Uh, it says eighteen, yeah, the first turnaround is eighteen months, and then six months. Uh, it says eighteen, yeah. The first go around is eighteen months, and then six months administrative, and then another six months, and then you go to the board. So that's why the reference for three point nine zero is.
Okay. Just want to make, make sure we're clear. Anything else on the flowchart besides certificates? Nothing. We'll move on to page twenty-five.
Number four, we need periods in D, F.
What do we need?
Oh, periods. Um, I have some questions regarding some of the things up above, and I know we approved this before, and I apologize, but under, under number two, letter of authorization. I'm not trying to put undue burden on somebody looking for a permit. Is a signed application adequate, or should it be notarized?
Um, we've been. I mean, getting it notarized is not a big deal, but when, um, if they are coming in to apply in the township because Lita is an awry builder, is an awry.
Right.
But if the applicant is someplace else and the, or, you know.
So it's unnecessary.
It's, yeah.
The legal point of view is unnecessary, okay.
I mean, we can still ask notar, notar, I mean, we are still asking notarization for site planning rules and, you know, the large scale dominance that's happening.
Where, it sort of gets back to case consistency thing, but we're, one place we need notarization, but another place we don't.
Right, but that, the consistency may not apply here because one case refers to zoning compliance permit and the other one refers to a site plan, so the level of element is different.
Okay.
Is, is my opinion.
Gotcha. Anybody else? No, okay. I have another question, but then on number three. And it gets into the discussion last night, and the count of the sizes of properties. We're going to be able to, point one acre, which I didn't even know was possible, really. Well, it said in the, that is last night, it's like we have point one and one point nine acres. But anyway, on number three. It says verify compliance particularly for smaller properties. Should we define that? Because if I were an applicant, then I would say, well, I think my property's plenty big enough. It's a half an acre or an acre or whatever.
No, I think you're right.
And, and we got a couple places like that.
Do we want to say, I mean.
Down on number five, we have the same reference to smaller properties. I don't know what that is.
Um, I think that probably is not entirely reflects the intent. What we're trying to do is if you have a small property and then you are saying you're setback thirty feet from the property line, and the minimum setback is thirty feet.
Right.
We don't want to sign off on something.
Well, I get where you're coming from, but I just.
Um, to verify.
It's ambiguous, and, and I think clarity in both those cases.
Right, so we could probably revise that to say to verify compliance with, uh, set, with dimensional standards. With minimum, to verify compliance with minimum dimensional standards.
And, and take away particularly smaller ones, yeah, I would say.
That's a good phrase. You don't want to be doing that.
Now, we're not getting into too much detail about is it at the same line or something, that just gives a, you know.
So the phrases again?
Yeah.
Uh, we will take away particularly for smaller properties.
Right.
And we'll replace that with, uh, we take away the comma too. So now the last part of the sentence would read to verify compliance with dimensional standards, period.
You said minimum.
Oh, minimum dimensional standards, period.
With minimum.
Dimensional standards.
Is it dimensional?
Dimensional, dimension.
Yeah.
Otherwise.
And, and while we're on that, the same would apply down on number five at the end of the second sentence. We're, we're gonna have to look at that and revise that, see, because if, well, when we get to number five, we can talk about it. I think the sentence is gonna be retaken.
Yeah, I think so.
Minimum dimensional standards. What was it?
We're not, we're not down to five yet. Don't worry about five.
I'm still on three.
To verify compliance with minimum dimensional standards.
Standards. Thank you.
Okay.
Sorry.
No, I think you can do it.
You just get rid of when compliance is difficult to determine, and then just say.
Prepare by. Let's, let's, let's get through the rest of it before we hit there. Okay. Number four, plot plans. Besides the periods, anything else in there?
Okay, so in C and D, this is graph, uh, so at the end of the first sentence in C, structures, where it says both, that's a lowercase b. And then in D, David, line two, it says lines, and then it's a capital R. And then I just Googled it, and I can't even read what the heck I just Googled, so I don't, I, so I'm gonna defer to K.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand the question.
So.
He's, he's.
He says capitalize both, which I don't think is correct.
This is not capitalized.
It's being referred as.
Both wouldn't be capitalized.
It explains, it explains when to and when not to. It, it said that, but then it got into all this other stuff about listing stuff and.
So I think C is correct.
Okay.
And I think D is correct also. The capital R for refer.
That's the second sentence.
You mean D, or, yeah, D, sorry.
So I think that's different because it's like a concreted idea.
Correct.
Right? It's not a phrase.
Right. So we're good.
I'm just throwing that out, and, and I just messed up my own brain by trying to Google. And I have no idea what I just read, so.
Okay.
What Tom said, so we're not changing anything.
We're not changing.
No, not changing.
Plan preparer. Um, this is where the smaller properties seem to come in. We, Jeff had a suggestion, and I think it's good. Will you please reread that?
I, I would just take when compliance, in the second line, when compliance is difficult to determine for smaller properties, just eliminate it, put exactly what we put up there. So it would read licensed professional to verify compliance with minimum dimensional standards. And then you kind of, particularly when drawings are hand drawn or based on question, kind of, do you answer? I think it fits fine.
Okay. You okay, Martha, with that? Jeff, would you go through it slowly for Martha?
Do you want me to show you, Martha? So in the second sentence where it starts with, it goes, it says prepared by a licensed professional.
Right.
And then right after that, we would strike when, all the way through smaller properties. And then we would replace it with what we wrote in three.
Which is?
To verify compliance with minimum dimensional standards. So it would read the zoning administrator may require a plot plan to be prepared by a licensed professional to verify compliance with minimum dimensional standards, particularly when drawings are hand drawn or based on Washington County G I S facts.
Shree, did that work for you?
That seemed good.
Yeah. Everybody else good with Jeff's correction? Thank you, Jeff. Number six, building plans. Anything there or seven? They're the same as we had before. Hey, on to page twenty-six.
Um.
Yes.
A lot of other places we capitalize words, and we didn't there, we don't.
Those are general words. It's not specific words.
Well, it's in seven. Every, every, everybody's got a bolded title, and seven we don't. Yeah, that's true. What would you bold? The zoning administrator?
This is parrot me, then says additional other information. That would be the title.
Oh, other information. You're talking about adding a title. So bold it, other information, period. And then start with the zoning administrator.
Okay, on to twenty-six. Everybody okay there? Go forward. I didn't find anything on this page. Did anybody else?
I did.
Almost, period.
What?
I mean, I'm, I'm catching up. There are a couple of places where certificate on zoning compliance is on capitalized. Um, in I, it's not. J, it's not.
Hold on. Zoning compliance on the first line of I.
J. L.
Go slow. Got to make sure we don't write this.
And N.
And I'm guessing?
Yes.
Uh, yeah. Should the certificate also be capitalized? So it's back to J and I. And L. And N.
And an H preliminary is capitalized too, so preliminary comes before certificates.
Oh. Yep, so J is gonna have capitalized preliminary.
We'll put the same for K.
Yeah, L.
Yeah.
And N as in Nancy.
Go. Martha?
Thank you, sir.
Okay, good.
I think you can probably just add that as a general comment, go through the whole document to make sure.
Okay.
Because it.
Yeah.
Well, I'm sure.
Yeah, I'll do a, I'll do a universal search and think of it, so we don't have to.
Okay. So nothing in terms of content? Then anybody?
Um, I. The last line of I. You're giving the township permissions to go to verify compliance with this and all other applicable ordinances. Applicable means what? And is that giving at the cart launch to promote your property or anything? Um, is it written?
No, no, no. It's applicable means, it means, uh.
What is?
What applies to that project or that, that, yes.
Like, for example, if your applicable ordinances is other than zoning contents, if they have, if any, you know, land division ordinance or private door ordinance applies, and we have to make sure it complies. Over to the section, but George is on, our answer is simple. If it applies.
Right. Okay, thank you. Nothing else on page twenty-six then? On to page twenty-seven. I didn't have anything. Anybody else? Okay?
Q, I know we had to add the case, but it's, it's still, it's awkward. A preliminary certificate is zoning compliance in the case of any false statement. Um, we don't want to say, I mean, if there is any false statement, or it just seems awkward to me. I think I know what it means, but.
In the event?
In the event, yes. I like it. I want to share a funny fact. I don't know what's the.
Hold on, let's, let's get this right for sure. So we're making case to be back.
Event.
Okay, thank you. Funny story.
The Chimpel and Rohr application that went to Z V A last month, they were expanding a non-conforming structure, and that was the, the, the reason why the structure is non-conforming is because a part of the garage, the garage, dashed garage is eight feet from the property line, where it should be thirty feet. And I went through the previous zoning compliance permit applications to see if there was a boundary line adjustment that happened, what passed the non-conformancy. You know, it's only eight feet from the property line. And then I looked at, when the house was built, they applied for a permit, and they put a drawing where they said the exterior wall of the house is thirty feet from the property line. Six years later, or ten, I don't know, they applied for a compliance permit to add a garage to the house, and on the permit drawing, they said the exterior wall of the garage is thirty feet from the property line. How is that possible?
It's not.
And then the permit was issued, they built the garage, now the garage is eight feet from the property line. So that would be a good case of revocation, but they already built it, right? Just an example is what that means. You know, it's a false representation of data.
Okay. Um. Aside from the preliminary capitalizations, everybody's okay with?
Yeah, there's a lot of capitalizations.
Yeah. So we're, anything else on, on page twenty-six besides event and Q?
Are we in the new section yet?
No. Anything? Okay, moving on to section three point eight five inspections. Okay?
The very first sentence of A, the development or usage proposed. We usually say use, and use is more general than usage. So would it make sense to just say use? Use, usage is like the common way. It's done, but use is general. So replace usage with use. Thank you.
This is related to this, but has a lawyer wanted this yet?
Um, compliance permit?
Yeah. Okay. Anything else besides K's?
I have a question on number two. So it's about final inspections, and it says a final section shall be required for the following instances. And then there's a number of different situations and criteria. So my question is, is a final inspection always required? Is, so, but just the criteria are different? Yes.
Uh, it's when, uh, like, yeah, what, what are you inspecting when you do a final? That's different, but the final is always required.
So, but because the starting sentence implies by saying a final inspection shall be required for the following instances, it implies that there are some instances where it's not, it's not required, but it is required in all instances of these other criteria.
Right. Uh, yeah, so I think we could revise that to say the following conditions shall be verified at the time of final inspection.
That makes sense, we say it again.
The following conditions shall be verified at the time of final inspection.
Okay, anything else there? Seeing on page twenty-eight.
I had a question on D, starting out with, or I missed something. New uses of home occupation. Still a difference from whatever it does there.
Oh, I, oh, I'm sorry.
So we have a final inspection by township administrator. Should that read township administrator or designate?
Yeah, yes, because Chuck has been doing inspections.
And, I mean, there's a couple of them that says, I would understand if it was just the zoning administrator doing it, but, I, I don't know if you need to put a catch-all in final inspection. You know, like the, the, the title.
Yeah, I think.
Final inspection, the final inspection shall be required by the zoning administrator or designate. or designate for the bond.
Are you back on the previous page?
Yeah, I'm just wondering if it...
No, that makes sense. It might make it simpler to, rather than be ridiculous.
Yes, it's simpler to do that.
Let's move, let's move back. Yep, we're back on page 27.
So the whole zoning administrator or designate, if you want to just put it on, and it does mention...
Under, under A, types of inspections, correct?
Uh, no, I was just looking at final inspection. It could be either way.
A2.
Well...
You're A2?
Right.
I'm thinking also makes sense.
But, but no, I agree with you.
We're all over the place. There's two places then, because you're, we're gonna be consistent. Right, and that's in A. The second sentence going to the third would say, "Following inspection by the zoning administrator or designate, correct?"
Right.
Then also...
I think you only need it there.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, you only need it there. I was looking at two, but...
Well, hold on. Another staking inspection, so we're gonna be consistent. We include it there because there's zoning administrators checking staking also.
The staking is done by a professional surveyor after zoning administrator.
Right.
Okay. Can you have over to work on Martha?
Um, if you want to just, I get the gist there. It's multiple places that can be revised. So Mark, if you just want to add a comment saying, simplify to be consistent and revise it.
I think simplify to be consistent and add zoning administrator or designate in A.
Me too. Yeah, well, yeah, I know.
You don't need other two, just put it here.
In A.
And it takes everything.
I didn't think that. I thought we were talking about A2.
Right, we did, and then Tom jumped up here because he realized if it was here, it would take care of everything.
It's done by zoning administrator or designate.
Okay, Mark, let's say revise, revise to be consistent with reference to zoning administrator or the designate.
So we're putting it in A, A.
In A.
And also, I love...
But just if you put that comment, then she'll catch it.
Yeah, but I would say put it in A and then revise the rest. So you can know what it is.
Yeah.
Tom, you made a comment at the beginning that if PC has discussed eliminating foundation inspections, this is where it was eliminated, if you guys want to talk about it.
So why was it eliminated?
It, uh, it slows down the process because county does the foundation inspection as well. And we usually take a couple of days to schedule inspections. So it just slows down the process, construction process. And like, we do staking inspection to verify setbacks and we do final. So foundations just redundant because county does it anyways.
Do they provide you with a copy of the county inspection?
I mean, I guess it's not redundant. Let me correct my statement, because county doesn't verify setbacks. But the major, a major reason why that was eliminated is, one, it takes time away from, you know, other things. And then, two, it really impacts the timeline of the resident because when it comes for them to get foundation contractors, they're like, they need an inspection done the day of or, you know, as soon as possible. We don't have buffer that wouldn't impact the construction timeline.
But you're saying the county already does an inspection of the foundation? Or the company does, somebody does?
County does. They don't verify setbacks, but they make sure that the foundations and formations are...
So we don't need to repeat it?
Yeah, it didn't serve any purpose and it just takes time.
So it's a case question. Do we get a copy of that report? That could...
We don't, but it wouldn't be helpful. It would not be helpful either because their foundation inspection is based on structural.
Right, how I get it?
Right. What, what, I mean, I'm trying to understand why it would be...
No, so it makes sense, you're not repeating it because you don't need it.
Right.
We really need the staking one.
Yeah, that's what we do.
Because we're not inspecting the, the foundation.
Right, and, and then it just adds another layer of record keeping. If you try to get a foundation inspection from county, it just adds more work. And this is, I don't mind more work, not needed unless it's a work.
Question more, one. If I have a file on my house, I want to know that everything's there.
But you'll have it because you'll be done from the county.
Well, that's...
Yeah, they have it on their records.
Okay, gotcha. Martha has one.
Are we changing then D to zoning administrator or designate?
Uh, she's going to make all those corrections, all of them. Basically, yeah.
In that whole section? A will define, yeah, A and B.
Yep.
I mean, it's in other places.
Right, that's why...
Where you look and there's or designate. She's gonna have to go through the whole document. Or designate adds to the...
So are you okay, Lou, on the 3.9? I, I didn't find anything in 3.9. Did anybody else?
The whole section?
Well...
I did.
I'll like, go ahead. Question.
Capitalize.
Did you first talk about that?
Like, really, no, did I?
I thought it drew in the column. Section 3.9.
Uh, B4, section should be capitalized.
Yes.
Were you talking about certificate of zoning compliance again?
No, that, I'll just do it in a universal thing for that. She's talking about section four.
B4. This is B4? Yeah. So I have a problem with B4 at the end. It seems like an incomplete idea. So the very last part, it says, um, for which the unit's part, "Has not been met or a satisfactory performance guarantee filed with the township." So it's, it's right, or a satisfactory performance guarantee has not been filed, right? It's, the point is that this is missing.
Yes, yes.
So it's missing a verb there?
Yes.
Not.
So is, has not, is not?
Yeah, I think you're right, has not.
A satisfactory performance guarantee is not filed. Or has not been filed.
Has not been filed.
Has not been filed, or, yeah.
Okay.
Has not been filed.
All was that same one that you did look at? No.
I did have a question on three, B3. What's a public read?
Sorry, public road?
Well, it's a public road.
I thought it was a public, it's a public road. I thought, okay, then this is a public road. I thought there was a real public road.
We're, we're, we're doing it right now. That's why I had a question. I don't know, they're gonna have a public read. Guys stand on the soapbox in public, it's gonna make some public read.
Anything else in B? Moving on to C, final certificate. Any comments in that section? None, really?
It's just, it's just a weird thing, temporary filing.
Yeah.
Do you have temporary files, three?
Temporary, C4.
Temporary files, three.
Yes. Um... Yeah, we've got that. If we want to change the terminology, I'm open to it. But it's like, it's not the final, final, but it's not preliminary either. It's like a... It's not, it's not, because we already issued preliminary. Because we, we, okay, this is what happens. So we issue a preliminary certificate of compliance. That's a green light to start construction.
Yeah. These are the same people who are making cars that you recall because the thing goes worse.
So you have, you issue a preliminary certificate of compliance. That is a green signal to, okay, you can go ahead and start construction. And you issue a final certificate of compliance when you, um, when you complete everything. So the county doesn't issue a certificate of occupancy unless we issue a final certificate of compliance. However, sometimes people may not, like, for St. Joe's, they couldn't complete all the outside improvements like asphalt paving and landscaping because winter, the frost season started. But the building was all complete, so they wanted a temporary certificate of occupancy. And then the county wouldn't issue that unless we sign off on some kind of a final. So would it be an intermediate final?
Could it be called a substantial?
Completion?
Sure.
So that...
So would you, okay, I mean, we understand what it is.
So it's just like, it's, it's, it's allowing them to get a temporary certificate of occupancy from the county. Also, um, so it could be an authorization for temporary certificate of occupancy?
I think it's...
Okay. So that, that's, that's where I'm like, okay, it's...
Well, the, the whole section's come there. You're just, number eight four, the section's titled that.
Yeah.
So go back to page 24. You have to be consistent. The last, what's on the page, it says temporary certificate of compliance, 3.90C. Final in there, just make sure you're consistent with the section.
Just, just leave it.
Yeah, just leave it. It's true to the title just now.
Oh, it's true. Yeah.
Oh, that says 3.90C and this one says 3.95.
Let's just fill three pages.
Oh, I'm looking at the very last one.
No, the first one is final certificate of compliance. I should probably call it certificate of zoning compliance. Is that one?
Chart, B, chart.
B, section 3.90B, where issue, the, or, issuance of final certificate of compliance. I should call that issuance of final certificate of zoning compliance.
Yeah, on the table, on the chart. Do you do it?
Oh, no, I'm still in the language.
What, what, what page are you on?
Uh, 28. Section 3.9, 3.90B, the title. It should be final certificate of zoning compliance.
Oh, I see. Nice catch.
And then C is a...
Right.
If you want to be consistent, you can also call it issuance of temporary. He still said that's in itself. That's why I kind of like, took up the issue.
No, but in the chart, it's gotta be consistent.
That's the chart, yeah. Yeah, I didn't get to the chart. I don't stop there.
So let's go back to the chart on 24. What are you changing there? So Martha gets it.
24, I'm coming there.
That's the chart.
Publicity of zoning compliance.
Okay, so on the chart, the block right above, you know, the one from the bottom one, it says temporary certificate of compliance, 3.90C. That should be temporary final certificate of zoning compliance.
God, Margaret? Thank you very much. Thank you for your honor, highs and years and all that comes with it. So does that, did we talk about C from page 20 or are we still there? Picture label? Right, so we're okay with C now?
But the chart, still the titles, still doesn't match the text.
That's what you were gonna say.
But there's not just one thing, there's more than one. Every single one is different. So if you look at the first, the middle block, preliminary certificate of compliance permit, in the text, it says preliminary certificate of zoning compliance. So the word zoning is missing from all these.
Right, so verify all titles on the chart.
Verify all titles.
That sounds good.
In relation to the text, right?
Yes. They're close, but they're not the same.
They are.
Okay, do it. Thank you. Tom Silver would be with that now. On to page 29, are we good there to move forward?
I think so.
Okay, building permit. I only have one period in the number four. And I know the capitalizations we talked about earlier.
There's an extra space on three between page two.
Is that an English name, K, or are we okay with K? Well, no, there's justification of type. Now, you said type, and sometimes the space looks larger, simply with the words.
That's an optical illusion thing, that's wrong.
Yeah. Okay, sure. So there really are two spaces, everything?
I think it's the justification thing. I recently learned it during the...
Okay. Anything else on D then? Seeing none, section 3.95. I have a big one. Yeah. Is it 16 or 60 days?
Sixty.
B.
B? That says 16 days, but then there's the 60 number, so...
It's supposed to be 60, right?
That's why I'm sort of big.
60, so which zone?
Number B, it says, the first, the end, the second sentence, the first sentence with the second line says 16, the word should be 60, spelled out. Sorry to jump ahead. Anything on A? I didn't have anything on A. Anybody else? Other than B? Oh, okay.
Something on D.
Are we okay with A and C then? Okay, D.
So in the first sentence, it says each extension granted will not exceed 180 days. And then it jumps to a maximum of two such six months extension may be issued. Is it confusing to call one in one case, 180 days, in the next case, six months?
Which is it? When people start to calculating six times 30.
Yeah, so is it six months?
Are, are we in D? Did you say D?
Oh, I'm sorry. It jumped to A2.
I have one in D. Capitalization of the S in subsection, the first one. So now we're down to E? Okay. Yeah, I'm reading D. I wonder what she's talking about.
I'm sorry, I...
Um, I would probably keep it months because we've made enough, we made reference to 18 months. We have reference to 12 months and then six months. So just change 20 days to six months.
The first line.
Yeah. So we're changing what?
We're, we're eliminating 180 days and making it six months. Spelled out both six and the number six. Anything else in D, or I mean, E? F, anything in F?
Capitalize that's in section from the last line to one.
One.
Section 3.5.
Oh, yes. Introduce it to our certificates of zoning. Thank you. Nothing else? I have nothing on the next page.
I do. I don't have the next page.
There isn't, there is nothing. Nothing on the next page.
Over on the summary, 3.100, 3.105, and 3.110. It's on the other section, see draft for more details.
I don't have it on the page.
There is no page.
It's something on page 22.
22?
Yeah, she went way back.
We're past 22.
But under summary, you can toggle all these three sections. And it says, see draft for more detail. What does that mean? There's not, there's nothing else.
They're not in the draft.
Do you see what I'm talking about, Tom?
That's how I'm, I'm, oh, you mean the titles.
Yeah, at the bottom of the page. So it's three sections, remove to other sections, see draft and more detail.
Oh, and there isn't a draft. No, there's no draft here.
Oh, uh, that was a carryover. Remember the last packet I gave you, the red light version? You begin where those sections were moved? So I meant that one.
Oh, okay.
So that should be eliminated.
Yeah, they are gone because they're moved to section. So 3.95 is the last section in the, per those drafts. last section in the purple draft.
That, that can start with, I see.
Gotcha. I have a print on my page, it's blank. Still stuck on section D, I think.
Can you draw it, Tom?
Yeah, probably it's been long. So seeing that we have gone through this, may I have a motion?
I have, well, I have a motion. I move that we complete these adjustments and send it to the lawyer for review. Complete the revisions.
That's, well, that's not a motion.
I move that we.
They don't have to do that.
Oh, you said a motion.
Motion's for a public hearing.
I'm not making a motion for a public hearing. Who wants to see the attorney's comments before setting the public hearing?
Do you think we can have them back before the public hearing?
Oh, we can have them back before the next meeting if you want to set the public hearing, but it's up to you if you wanted to see the draft and set a public hearing for the next meeting, or if you're giving the comments at the time of public hearing. It's your choice.
My main thought is I want to get the comments from the lawyer and that we see them.
I understand.
The exact timing.
Right, but I guess we have a motion on the table, so we have to act on it first, unless K wishes to amend it.
No, it's seconded.
Oh, we did second it?
No, that was not seconded.
Oh.
It was not seconded.
That was not seconded, that's what I was discussing. I see your point, I just. Typically, we haven't made a motion to go to the lawyer for a formal motion. It's been done as a matter of course.
Sometimes it's been done after we've already done.
I know.
But I'm okay with getting it and having the public hearing at the same time, personally. But I just want to get it, that we see it.
No, I didn't get it. Are you guys okay with that, the rest of you?
I think in the past, you got the comments at the time of public hearing, and then you decided to make the recommendation and then made after, because there were some revisions drawn there by. So you still have the option then.
That's okay.
So you don't have to make the recommendation at the public hearing.
Right. Is that okay with that? So do you want to hold your motion to?
Well, because I did, so someone has to make a motion.
I can make this up, I want to make a motion, I can.
I, I can make motion then. So I move that we complete the revisions as discussed, send it to the lawyer, and schedule a public hearing for the next meeting. Forward.
On September?
September seventeen.
On September seventeen for twenty-five Z T A O three.
Second.
Second. Julie, roll call.
Aye.
Call, aye, aye.
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 Aye. Aye. Motion's carried. Thank you very much for your work on this. To business, we have a. Discussion items.
Section nine point one two.
Well, that's nine point one oh, isn't it?
The non-comerative F A R amendment, the board adopted the draft that was forwarded by the planning commission. I did indicate in an email, trying to get one more revision at the board level because in my opinion, it was consistent with the discussion and it was only, it's less restrictive and it only applies to, you know, thirty-five properties. But I think K came and expressed her opinion, board decided to send it back to planning commission. So if you guys, if you see fit, we can put that on the next month's agenda.
And that was, that's nine point one five.
It's, it's the F A R standard for R one, non-conforming districts.
Yeah. Thank you. You guys all came to that, our September agenda?
Yes.
Good, okay, thank you. Parks and Rec?
I kind of gave that as part of the zoning.
Pardon me?
Parks and Rec master plan, okay, said it as part of my zoning administrator report.
Okay.
I don't have much to ask.
Okay. Master plan implementation, is there any update on that, or are we, where we were left?
So at the last meeting, we gave out copies, and I think you zeroed in on the one point which we already discussed, which is that sixteen point one five was selected as a ground water for the next priority master plan revision. And otherwise, I don't know if anybody had any comments about what I updated it with. It hasn't changed.
It hasn't changed.
I don't have, is anybody else? What's on that? Okay. I got the question in, when do we want to put that on our agenda? Because, go ahead.
We had the nuisance ordinance.
Right.
And then we had this, but in both cases, at some point, we need to work a tree.
Right.
But the nuisance ordinance was ahead of this in terms of.
So, well, I was going to get into the September agenda, but how are you feeling in terms of voting things? I know this road thing has taken a lot of time.
Yeah, so I do have a special meeting on September then for the roads.
Yeah.
So I don't want to make promises, but I won't, I can attend a meeting with the subcommittee if it needs, but I'm not, I don't have time. Let's live here, right?
Are you guys in the working group located?
Working.
Yeah.
I've got my own feet.
You sure you're not, not knowing the time and how much we're discussing, we're back, we talked about that last September.
That was supposed to be roads meeting.
We did, George. I'm for it.
I, I didn't know.
Paulie, no offense to your end of work, you sort of feel like we're sort of stuck in neutral.
Right, no, I am open to have a meeting with the focus group. I just can't know if I'll have time to put a draft together for the next meeting regarding nuisance, but I think.
Well, they can give an update, or a report.
Yeah, that's, that's true. And I can work with Matt to get the comments back for the September seventeenth meeting for compliance permit.
Okay.
He has some extra hands now.
Good.
And we have the nine point one two F A R. One, one five.
Actually, that's even hours, nine point one five.
Yeah.
You know the one, you know. You know.
Thank you. Next, we're meeting agenda. Then, so working group report. Nine point one oh, correct.
Right, one five.
One five, geez.
Yeah.
Yeah, nine point two, one five. Our public hearings, lawyers' comments. Anything else coming back at that point, Shuri, from anybody that you could think of? Okay. Anything else, other commissioners, now that you want to have on your agenda for September?
I will not make the September meeting, so you can put, I vote that we put a ton of stock on that.
Well, but I, okay, so, so we'll, we'll open up for public comment. Anybody with a. Anything else this evening, sir?
Do I have to get up?
Well, if you want to be heard so she can hear you.
Oh, of course.
Oh, come on. No, you're only.
How many ways have you broken?
I have broken multiple ways.
I've broken this one almost in, well, I did break it pretty much in half, anyway, that one.
Nice.
I guess.
Hardly happened. Should we put this in the minute, bro?
I don't want to get it.
Temporary broke.
Long story. Just a quick comment, this does apply to everybody currently here. I really appreciate the professionalism of this board, especially after last night.
Thank you. Well, I have some information items you can choose to believe or not. I want you all to know that based on the training that we got at last month's meeting, in your files with Tony, is one and a half hours of training time.
Yay.
That being said, on the other hand, required by our files to have four. I don't know where you stand, I don't, look at that, I'm not a guy who goes in and goes, well, I need to call them in the office. But please stay on topic. That being said, one of the things that you can do that I did is, and it's online, the MTA, because we have a free thing, is our mid-year legislative report. Many items of which are affecting us potentially, including. Continuing, continuing to include, having the state control over solar, even at the local level, and not even in large scale. Preempting local controls on setbacks. Which would be just all kinds of interesting. Also limiting maximum lot size, given we're a rural community, who knows what that implies? Accessory dwelling units, which we are in drafted, but they can preempt, there's a discussion to preempt our management of that. And the last is lot splits with a maximum of four. So to the comment earlier about grandfather, you know, I have five lots and I want to sell off three, you are stuck at four based on the proposal that's in at the state at this point. So just be aware that they are talking about things that are directly involved, you can go out and listen to that. It was also covered in some of our, if you got the magazine, looked at the back of that, but, so there's just a lot going on at the state level, and that's one hour that you get to sit there and have a hole in, and listen to what the state guys have to say. What's it called? It's, it was the mid-year update, MTA mid-year legislative update. And I want to echo Peter's things I've said before, but as chair, I really appreciate everything you guys do, and you tell us what we do in our attempt to move things through at a relatively reasonable pace, clarity, and good direction, so, thanks very much. That, I'm done, anybody got a motion? Move to a chair.
Second.
Give it a fall. All in favor? Aye. Post.
Hey, when you get called off the whole night, do you need me? I'm not going to admit like a little while.